Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular meeting of the Weyburn City Council, held here in the council chambers at 5:00 PM, Monday, December 9th, 2019. Today, we have Youth Mayor Fatma is going to be here with us today representing the Youth Council. You might also note that both Councillor Chessel and Councillor Richards is absent, but we have a quorum to move forward with our council business, as this is the second last council meeting of the decade. Quite interesting. We're moving forward. First off, with approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting held November 25th, 2019. Do you have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, Your Worship.
Second?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
All in favor? Carried unanimously. There's no, any additions to the agenda? Mr. Warren?
I know there's no additions from administration or Worship.
Youth Council? Nothing? Okay. Council? Nothing? With that, we move forward to the public hearings and notices, which there are none. Today, we have, we're in our delegations. We have from InVision Counseling and Support Center, we have Tanya and Krista. If you would, please come forward, ladies.
Happy holidays and welcome to the council. Thank you for having us. My name is Tanya Lohofsky-Andrist and this is Krista Dacko. And Krista is the Executive Director of our organization, InVision Counseling and Support Center, and I am the Resource Development Coordinator. Matthew delivered, did some deliveries for us of our sponsorship package. Perhaps you recall from a year ago, we were here requesting sponsorship and donation from the city of Weyburn, and we're back. We're back because we're in your community and we're hoping that you would take a look at our sponsorship package and consider our organization for funding for the future, for the future, for something long-term perhaps and sustainable. We have been building a network of communities in the southeast. We have offices in Estevan, Weyburn, of course, just up the street from here, in Carlisle and Oxbow, and our organization serves the community and those most in need in the community in, right in the southeast. So, we have been building a network of supporters from town councils, RMs, and including the city of Carlisle and the city of Estevan, that support our cause with just a small donate, well, it depends, I guess, the amount of your budget, but a not-large donation, sponsorship per year, and we're requesting that waiver and come, join this network and be involved in our organization at a financial level. I turn it over to Krista.
Well, first of all, thank you again for having us here. We are here to share a little bit about what's happening in Weyburn. Although, we're very pleased and grateful with the community's support that we've received throughout the community, with the stakeholders and partners that we have, what is happening in the city and in our region, as you know, with the downturn in the economy, we're seeing a real influx of mental health issues. So with that, and that's province-wide, to be honest, with that, we've been successful in a collaboration with Provincial Network that I belong to, InVision belongs to Family Services Saskatchewan, to bring walk-in counseling to our area. So what we're here to really inform you of is that we are advocating at a higher level for the individuals that live in our community, and we would really like the city's support in doing that. To be completely honest, the Weyburn statistics are the highest of any of our regions, so we really would, would like to plead that the city step forward and support us in our cause for individuals living in a healthier community, because that's what our goal is and that's what our mission is, and be it sexual assault is on the rise, domestic violence is on the rise, and obviously, mental health issues is on the rise, and we see those individuals coming in through our programs, not in an acute mental health circumstance, they seek through mental health services, but we see before it gets to that acute level, and it's on the rise with all the stressors that we're dealing with. So with that, I'll invite any questions that you want to come forward with.
Yeah, I do, thanks very much, Your Worship. Thanks again for coming to our council. The figures again are how much? Have you got the numbers you can share with us?
Our current caseloads in Weyburn in our interpersonal violence and abuse program is 76, and that's an all-time high. That encompasses individuals who've been sexually assaulted, living in domestic violence situations, overall unhealthy relationships, and the family counseling program that we are running out of the InVision office here is at 35, and that's fairly encompassing as well. If you look at the family, there's three or four or five involved in a family. And then we have the family support program, which is contracted, and we have the voluntary parenting support program through our services. We are having all-time high numbers for that as well, and that we truly believe is a prevention to kids becoming involved in the child protection system.
Mr. Van Betje?
Yes, thank you for coming tonight. Do you receive government funding?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it stable or has it changed over the years?
Our government funding is stable. We were frozen for three years, but they gave us our 1% increase, although, a lot of our government funding goes towards the salaries that we, and the operational support as we continue to grow. We don't have, there's shortfalls in mileage, there's shortfalls in IT support. You know, we're growing agency and there's a lot of additional costs that come along with that growth, and, and that's where our sponsors come in.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just add one more thing that I neglected to get into initially, is that we like to visit, or I certainly spend a lot of time visiting small RM councils and town councils to not just say, "Look at, here's what we're doing, would you like to support us?", but also say, "Look at, here's what you're doing, what we're doing." We want to speak to the leaders of every community and have them understand what services are available in their own community. And so, when Krista mentioned this new partnership with walk-in counseling, it's new, it's very, very exciting, and it speaks to this issue of, of mental health that is so critical right now. So, two days a week, we've just started this fall, two days a week at the Salvation Army in Weyburn, if there is a person who's suffering a mental health crisis, they don't have to go to mental health, they don't have to go to the hospital, they can see a counselor that very same day. And so, I mean, I actually brought some posters, maybe if you want to hang them up or share them around, but now that, again, the individuals in this room and the people that are hearing this meeting understand that, I mean, we're trying to respond to the needs of the community, and this is something that we have even learned about in our, our needs assessment, and we've learned about that these, this is just such an emerging issue, whether it's teenagers, parents, whether it's people with any kind of mental health issue, it doesn't have to do with our mandate of violence, it can just be a mental health issue, and then we'll refer them to the appropriate help that they may need, something more, more specific. So, that's something that's happening right here.
What days are those? What days?
The two, the days are Tuesdays and Fridays, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and we've just moved to that new address at Salvation Army. So, again, and that's something that's brand-new, and that, again, part of us visiting and part of us spreading, you know, coming to these council meetings is to really share our services and share that what's happening with our organization, with the leaders of the community, so that you can then spread the word. Pass it on and share that message to others.
If there's no further questions, Mr. Van Betje, if you have one?
Well, just a question, so, is that your new office, then? No.
No, our office, go ahead.
Your office is still on Third Street?
This is a provincial collaboration.
Okay.
There's 11 agencies throughout the province, so, once we received the funding, it was up to us to develop partnerships. So, so far, we've developed partnerships in Estevan and Weyburn, where we offer clinic twice a day, twice a week in each location, and we're looking at expanding further. The beauty of this program is there is no mandate attached, so it's for anybody who's experiencing any type of crisis, and then it's an entry level to the, to whatever community resource they need the most.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes. Are you, are you going out to?
Sorry, sorry, Corey. Are you going out and, and presenting this to RMs as well as all the other communities?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll let Tanya speak to that, actually.
Do, well, my second part of that is, do you have a target number to reach, to meet your needs?
We, we would like to reach and form a partnership, relationship with every one of the RMs and towns, but we have actually, I would say, maybe not quite half of the RMs, if you take out that block of our, of our service area, maybe not quite half. I've visited, and, and I don't have the number on this, but we have over 20, over 20 that, that are in, again, we call it a network, they, they've entered into long-term arrangements with us for five years. So, it's not a large amount of money. Some smaller RMs donate $500 per year for five years. Some of the larger ones, $1,000, and then Estevan is at $1,500. So, but by leveraging all the support of each other, then, again, then we're sending emails, we're connected. We, we had our big anniversary last year in May, I mean, earlier this year in May, and there was a, a real connectivity of these RMs that, that knew about what was going on. You've got Theron Fleury coming to town, okay, so, you know, they knew about it, we had some attendees, and, and again, anything new that comes out, they get the press releases, and it goes right to the town office, right? Because they believe in, they support us, and so, we're just here asking that, that Weyburn joins. We really believe in it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McElhul.
One more thing, again, I thank you for your integrity and what you do with this organization, but in fairness to us too, we're just in the, in the budget process as we speak.
Mm-hmm.
So I think in fairness, because you're asking for funds, it has to go into our budget for deliberation. We'll certainly have a look at that and we'll get back to you.
That sounds good. Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you again, Tanya and Krista. Reports of standing committees. Mr. Van Betje, if you, Police Commission report, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. A regular meeting of the Weyburn Police Commission was held on Tuesday, November 19th. CAPG Conference Report was taken as information. This was followed by the Mayor's Report in October 2019 in comparison to October 2018. The crimes against persons has increased by six, crimes against property had increased by 22, total call for service had decreased by 98, going from 431 in 2018 to 521 in 2019, and alarm calls decreased by three. Accounts payable report was presented to the board. Vehicle report was presented to, by Chief Stafford. He provided a report on the current status of police vehicles in the fleet with a total of 10 vehicles in the fleet. In addition to, are included in this, the board receives $30,000 annually from SGI for the purpose of replacement of the SGI CTSS vehicle, which will give us a new vehicle once every three years. Overtime report, Deputy Chief Stafford provided an overtime report as of October showing a total of 1,474 hours for a total dollar value of $97,363.47. The bylaw enforcement report for October was presented and reviewed by the board. The Weyburn Humane Society report for September was presented and reviewed by the board. These reports were all received and accepted as presented. In unfinished business, the board had a very brief discussion on policy and will discuss further in, moving forward in the next meeting. The board reviewed the 2020 proposed budget presented by the deputy chief. In new business, Mayor Roy advised that Rob Stephenson had resigned from the board effective immediately due to regulations with his new employer. In saying this, I would like to thank Councillor Stephenson for his years of service. Not only was he, when he was councillor, he was on the police board, but he was president of the Canadian Association of Police Governments for, I believe, two years. He was a past president, the last year and a half, I believe, and again, I would like to thank Mr. Stephenson for years of very good service at his, he will be missed on the board because of his knowledge and experience. Meeting was adjourned.
Moving for, that will be noted and filed. Consent agenda, we have the utilities report, and that is also to be noted and filed, and that will be found on our city website. Number seven, motions. Accounts payable, do you have a motion, please?
Your Worship, I have a motion that the purchases from November 22nd, 2019 to December 5th, 2019, in the amount of $1,703,213.14 be passed for payments. The purchases include quick pays, $42,658.37, accounts payable, $1,467,414.70, direct withdrawals, $190,128.49, and debit card transactions, $3,011.58.
I'll second that, Your Worship. Questions? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Second motion, municipal revenue sharing declaration.
Your Worship, I'll speak to that first before the motion goes on to the books, just so you guys are aware of what's going on. So what's happening right now is provincial government's asking for all the municipalities to follow certain guidelines to receive revenue sharing that we receive each year. So right now, the city receives $1.95 billion through revenue sharing. So starting in 2021, they want to make sure that all municipalities are following the certain criteria. So there's six eligibility criteria that we must follow. For, first is an audited financial statement, second is a wire works reporting, third is education property taxes in good standing, fourth is that we have accounts procedures by law, the fifth one is that we have employee code of conduct, and sixth is public disclosure statements from each one of our council members. The city of Weyburn meets all six criteria within that, so I've actually filled out all of the proper paperwork for this. What they require is a resolution from council to say that we do meet all these criteria and have that put forward.
Do you have a resolution, please?
Your Worship, I'd like to make the motion that the city of Weyburn council confirms the municipality meets the following eligibility requirements to receive the municipal revenue sharing grant. Submission of 2018 audited financial statements to the Ministry of Government Relations. Submission of the 2018 public reporting on municipal water to the Ministry of Government Relations. In good standing with respect to the report, reporting remittance of education property tax. Adoption of a council procedures by law. Adoption of an employee code of conduct, and all members of council have filed and annually updated their public disclosure statements as required, and that we authorize the city manager to sign the declaration of eligibility and submit it to the Ministry of Government Relations.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Very good. Now, introduction of bylaws. There are first bylaw, and then this was talked about on the radio here today, that we're going to have the Business License Bylaw 2019-3405. Mr. Warren?
Yes, Your Worship, there's a report in front of council from City Clerk Donat Richter in regards to our business license bylaws. Right now, we have two of them. Right now, we have a Business License Bylaw 992028, and the City General License Bylaw What we did is we did a research of our bylaws and found that no other municipality has two of them that regulates business licenses. So a thought was put through to combine them into one bylaw. So, we had City Clerk Richter go through, contact other municipalities, see what they had for their, their bylaws. We reviewed some of the current classifications within our bylaws. As you can see from the report, there's a number of changes she wants to have. Most of it's removing certain business classes from our Business License Bylaw. We have, I believe, 50, 60 different classifications within the current bylaw, which is quite hefty for what we have to do as a municipality, where a lot of things can fit into certain criteria. So in the report provided, there's ones that she would like to have removed. On top of that, she's not looking at increasing a lot of our fees. The fees that she is looking at increasing is one, by license fees, increase from $5 to $10. Flea market, I think you go from $114 to $125, and to be renamed to Trade Show, and then have flea market per year to now be named a Trade Show, and change that from $197 to $250. Increase home occupations from $132 to $200, and then to move all our fees to the nearest $5 as we go through. This will have no change in what we do for revenues at all. It'll just more of an easier process for us to, one, provide fees, and two, to have a fee that's structured a little more appropriate for each one of those areas.
Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, Your Worship. I'd like to make, move the motion that bylaw 2019-3405 being the Business License Bylaw of the city of Weyburn be read a first time.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Discussion? Mr. McElhul?
Thank you, Your Worship. To our city manager, Matthew, when was the la, when was the last time that we actually had a look at that, it increased or decreased?
So based on the bylaws, the City General License Bylaw was 2001, so you're 18 years ago since the last time you reviewed, you reviewed that through the process.
And again, these are simply cost recovery, how it's set up. It's cost recovery, it's not like they're...
Yeah, this, this, Your Worship, this is not a moneymaker for the city, this is just to make sure that we have a better process for what we do for business licenses.
Very good. Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Go ahead, Winston.
I'd like to move that bylaw 2019-3405 being the Business License Bylaw for the city of Weyburn be read a second time.
I'll second that.
Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously.
I'd like to move that the bylaw 2019-3405 being the Business License Bylaw for the city of Weyburn be given third reading at this meeting.
I'll second that.
Just before we move forward with that, is that, weren't we supposed to say that we were supposed to do a pass it unanimously, that everybody would allow a third reading?
That's correct.
That's correct, so...
So you can go into a third reading.
For me?
Yep.
So we can go into third reading?
Good.
Okay. Go ahead.
That, we got a vote on it.
For me?
You haven't called the vote yet.
Oh, okay. All in favor? And that's what I, I thought that was the third reading.
No, that's fine, Your Worship. I've got a lot of papers in my hand.
Yeah, I was looking at going south to third reading.
And finally, I'd like to move that the bylaw 2019-3405 being the Business License Bylaw for the city of Weyburn be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that.
Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Good. Second one is the Weyburn Leisure Services Commission Advisory Bylaw 2019-3406. Would you like to speak to that, Mr. Warren? Or Leisure Services, Mr. Crowe?
Thank you, Your Worship. So, since mid-September, the Leisure Services Department saw an organizational structure change to include the Parks Department within the scope of responsibilities of the Leisure Services Department. So with this change taking place, I'm recommending that the existing Parks Board 86-1624 and the Leisure Services Commission 2018-3392 bylaws be repealed, and newly formed Parks and Leisure Services Commission bylaw 2019-3406 be established. Why I'm recommending this is to bring the Parks and Leisure Services Commission in alignment with the scope of the Leisure Services Department, to streamline and enhance process to ensure that reporting is done to only one commission rather than a variety of different boards and committees within the department, to ensure that the main focus of the commission is that of long-term planning, acting an advisory role to the city council and city manager, and also the director of Leisure Services, as it relates to matters including the Tadagwa Parkway, Parks and Green Spaces, public recreation, leisure activities, arts, culture, museums, and city-owned facilities and special events. So with the repeal of the existing Parks Board and the Leisure Services Commission, all of those appointed positions will also be removed, and current members of both the Leisure Services Commission and the Parks Board will be provided with application forms and be invited to apply for a position within the new commission. So, the Parks and Leisure Services Commission would consist of seven members, two of them being city count, city council members, and five being citizens-at-large as appointed by council. And to ensure knowledge retention and consistency within the committee, it's recommended that we look at appointing these positions in two-year alternating terms. However, year one, we would, I would recommend that three of the members are appointed on a two-year term and two are appointed on a one-year term. So I would like to recommend the council to complete the process of repealing bylaws 86-1624 and 2018-3392, and that city council establishes the Parks and Leisure Services 86-1624 and 2018-3392, and that city council establishes the Parks and Leisure Services Commission bylaw as you see in front of you.
Do you have a motion, please?
Thank you, Andrew, or Mr. Crowe, sorry. I make the motion that bylaw number 2019-33406 being the bylaw of the City of Waverne to provide for the establishment of a Parks and Leisure Service Commission in the City of Waverne be read the first time.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion?
Thank you, your worship. I totally agree with this move that the city is doing. I've sat on both boards over the years, and, and there was times that, well, was that our responsibility, or was it Leisure Services? Should it go there first, or should it come to whatever? And so, I think this is a very good move on the part of the city to incorporate this, and with combining the both of them, it'll make that committee a very active committee, so I think it's great for the city.
Mr. Warren, you at one time said that you saw the benefits of this quite greatly all the way through.
Yes, your worship, so as a former leisure director, it's something that we've seen for some time, to see a great synergy between the two operations, good examples of what's happening with the skating rink we have, just outside of here at City Hall, and it's a really great partnership that the two are working together, and we're going to see the light as we move forward. I know Andrew's working towards building his team and making sure that the parks and leisure align for all their programs, their maintenance, their events, all those different things. And going back to what Counselor Bailey said, yeah, I did feel of that at times when I was on both facilities and Leisure Services, sometimes we were talking about things around parks and vice versa, and I think this will be a lot better for long-term planning as well, so we can have some more synergy as we go on the way through.
Seeing no further discussion, call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Go ahead, Mr. Bailey?
Oh, Mr., sorry. Be the bylaw of the City of Waverne to provide for the establishment of Parks and Leisure Service Commission in the City of Waverne be read the second time.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously.
Make the motion, your worship, that these bylaw 2019-3406 being the bylaw of the City of Waverne to provide for the establishment of Parks and Leisure Service Commission in the City of Waverne be given three readings at this meeting.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously.
And finally, the bylaw 2019-3406 being the bylaw of the City of Waverne to provide establishment of the Parks and Leisure Service Commission in the City of Waverne be read a third time and passed.
I second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. There's no unfinished business, new business, there's one home occupation, Amanda, if you would, please?
We have received an application from Rhian and Benjamin to operate an office for canine training services out of her home at 1784 Eagle Sham Avenue, which is located in R2 Zone in the Burnway Place subdivision. The business will operate various days of the week and various hours, with no clients being directed to the dwelling after 9:00 PM on any day. Most of the work will be completed off-site, however, there is one canine client who will be at the home during some of the days. Therefore, this would be considered a controversial use, as the occupation involves clients being directed to the home throughout the day. With minimum and minimal anticipated increase to traffic flow, parking in the driveway will be available for clients. Notices were mailed out on November 15th, 2019, to all neighbors within a 75-meter radius of the home. No concerns or objections were received. Overall, the home occupation is compliant with all other regulations, and there does not seem to be much reason to deny the permit with regard to the general provisions. As such, staff is recommending that council approve the home occupation for 1784 Eagle Sham Avenue with the following conditions. No person other than the resident of the dwelling unit shall be engaged in the home occupation as an employee or volunteer. No advertisement carrying out the address of the dwelling in which the home occupation occurs may be placed in any media. The face of any home business sign on site must not exceed .092 square meters and must be placed within the inside half of the front yard setback. Home occupations are subject to periodic review to ensure compliance. Owners' driveway shall be used for off-street parking for clients. No client shall be directed to the home after 9:00 PM on any day, and a City of Waverne business license is required prior to the operation of the home occupation.
Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship, I'd like to move that the home occupation application for Rhian Benjamin to operate a canine training service at 1784 Eagle Sham Avenue, Lot 6, Block 71, Plan 101, 409, 599, be approved with the following conditions. No person other than the resident of the dwelling unit shall engage in the home occupancy as an employee or volunteer. No advertising carrying the address of the dwelling in which the home occupancy occurs may be placed in any media. The face of any home business sign on site must not exceed .092 square meters and must be placed within the inside half of the front yard setback. Home occupations are subject to periodic review to ensure compliance. Owners' driveway shall be used as an off-street parking of clients. City of Waverne business license shall be obtained prior to operation of the home occupation.
Your worship, I'll second that motion. Discussion?
Yeah, thanks, Amanda. There's no puppies being cared for there and left there, it's, you bring your puppy, you get training and go?
She will, she'll be doing most of her training and dog sitting off-site. There's just one client who has a dog with special needs that she will be keeping at her place when that client needs her to watch that dog. That's the only dog that will be at her house, and that's the only reason we did the home occupation.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McElhul.
Amanda, when you say off-site, you mean out in the, in the country someplace, or what?
She will be going to the other owners' homes, where the animals are, yeah. If she does do group ones, she's also involved with Pet Value, she may have group training sessions, they will be done on private residence or property.
Is this something new in Waverne? Is this something new?
No, I mean, the vet service also provides dog training, too. This is something new for her, yeah.
It's new, it's brand new in a residential area, is what I'm saying.
Right, yeah.
But you sent letters out, and nobody's responded back.
Right, and we only sent the letters out because of the one dog that will be going to her house. Otherwise, we wouldn't have sent letters out because it's just the office, because nothing will be done at her house, so.
Thanks, Amanda.
Yep.
Any further questions? Seeing none? Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. That brings us down near the end. Inquiries and announcements, Fatima, you have, I'm going to put you on the spot, we, last time that the youth council was here, they sold a bunch of the different goodies and such, how is that, are you involved in that yourself, too?
No. Yeah, so, I actually wasn't here the last time they had the fire marshal over.
Yeah.
So, I'm not really sure who's selling this, but I believe it's the mayor and the co-mayor.
Right.
They are in the SRC at the school, and I believe they're the ones selling this stuff.
Through the junior business?
Yeah.
Because I see that some of it has been delivered on this, so, thank you. Anything? Bailey?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I'd just like to send congratulations out to the chamber, and I see Twyla's here. If you have not gone down to River Park and looked at what's down there, you're missing out on a, on a great event. I spent the evening down there last Wednesday evening, just handing out some hot chocolate and stuff, and I'm guessing, but I think there were 600 people through there that night, roughly, 500 to 600 people. It's incredible, so positive. Everybody that stopped and had a visit around my little bonfire there were so positive, so hats off to the chamber for getting that going, and who's ever involved with that, and, yeah, look forward to bigger and better even next year, but it's up and running until into January, I believe, so, just a great place. If you got a few minutes after dark, just go take a look at it, it's great.
Mr. McElhul.
Thank you, worship. I'm just going to tag on with Counselor Bailey, said it had one more part of the city package, that's our Parks Department under Kurt Block, did a tremendous job, too. Council sat back, I was at a function the other day and got a little, quite a bit of credit for this, and I said, whoa, credit due for tourism, Twyla Walkington, and our Parks Department, Mr. Kurt Block, they did all the work, we just made a check mark, said move on, so, thank you, people, for that. As well as that rink downtown at Second Source, that's tremendous, even I can skate in that, small eye surface. So, but hats off, like, this is tourism at its best. You can see that coming down a highway, and it's unbelievable. I know I've had a few calls about what the lighting costs, but I'm sure we can budget for that, and I'm sure we can overcome it, but as Counselor Bailey said, go have a look at it, it's beautiful. You know, that thing's been there for how many years, Twyla? And it's the first year we started, so next year will be the second annual.
It'll be bigger and better also next year, and it's impressive now.
Very good. So, any other, seeing no other inquiries and announcements, there's no notice of motion, and with that, we shall call, and just before we leave, we have one more meeting of the decade, December 23rd, and then we are ready to go. Thank you.